Hello.
Yeah, okay.
I don't know.
Good evening and welcome. It's six o'clock by my clock, so I call to order the Mayor and Alderman Meeting of January thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. And we'll start with the prayer. Alderman Sergeant.
Shall we pray? Our Father, again this afternoon, we just thank you for the opportunity we have as a small town to see ourselves here and consider the needs of the town and continue to pour over the things that are brought before us to make decisions about. We just commit and commend ourselves to you, asking for wisdom and guidance as we seek to know your will and the needs of this town. And we just thank you indeed for the opportunity to serve. Pray that you just continue to be with each one present tonight in their certain situations in their own lives and continue to guide us and direct us in our ways. And we'll be careful to thank you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Before we start the pledge, if the scouts will come forward, I have asked members of Cub Scout Pack Three, Two, One, Two to help us with the Pledge of Allegiance, as well as Boy Scout Troop Twelve Scout Master, is Willie here? No. They're accompanied by Nate Wilson, who's a Cub Scout leader, as well as Chip Andy, and if I missed anyone else, I apologize. Perhaps you've heard me say from time to time, it's good to get the youth involved, and we're honored to have them with us tonight.
Everybody's already standing. Thank you. Those that are, those scouts that are in uniform and those others, if they would render a salute, those others, anybody that's not in uniform, if they would place their right hand over their arms. Present arms. Our Pledge of Allegiance.
To the United States of America. In the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order arms.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you very much.
For me, it was a little refreshing. Okay, following the agenda as we see up here, we're trying something new for audiovisual, so I hope you can hear, and I hope you can kind of turn toward the wall to my left, your right, and we'll follow along. This is an attempt. There'll be more stuff posted as the meetings go on. So, roll call by the recorder, please.
Doreen Carmley.
Here.
Jessica Palavoro.
Here.
Dan Sargent.
Here.
Nate Wilson.
Here.
And Mayor's Director.
Here.
We have a floor.
Thank you. As a brief announcement, Debbie Taylor, our regular city recorder and secretary for the Mayor and Alderman Meetings, could not be here to, due to a family situation. So, we've asked Katie Trahan to take over, and she has agreed fortunately, so we'll have some minutes for next month. Speaking of which, I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes as submitted.
Mike motion for minutes.
Who made the motion, please?
Doreen.
I'll second that motion.
Alderman Sergeant seconded. Any corrections or additions as submitted? Hearing none, seeing none, the motions, the minutes are approved. Thank you. Okay, citizens' comments. Anyone want to start us off with a comment or two to consider, or you want to see how meetings progress? Okay, we'll see how meetings progress. Mayor's Communications, I don't have anything right now. I will chime in as the meeting progresses. And now we are at calendar events. The next meeting of the Planning Commission, just for information, is February seventh. Our next meeting of Mayor and Alderman is February twenty-seventh. It's usually the last Monday of the month. Workshop is at five o'clock, meeting is at six o'clock. That's for the Mayor and Alderman, and basically the same time for the Planning Commission, unless otherwise noted. Okay, the only thing I can report on, you probably have all seen evidence of it from time to time, we had a water line break over that very exceptional freeze Christmas weekend, and we have repaired everything. Everything is back in order. We're just waiting for the curls to come off of the baseboard here, base stripping, and then we'll have that finished. But it's been an insurance claim, it's been settled, and everything's been calculated. And just for further information, we had to cover a $10,000 insurance deductible, which is a part of our policy. Insurance policy, not our town policy. Anyway, we did all of that, so we think we've solved our problems so far, and there's probably be more work to be done. Okay. I promised Alvin Powell to be first because he had a very brief report on our baseball team sign-up and that report. So, Alvin, if you would, please, at the podium.
Mayor. Alderman, good to be here. Kind of like, going to update you as much as I can at this point, a little late. We've started sign-ups. It's been kind of slow sign-up, but that's what we expect.
Can you turn the mic on?
It's on. I think you just have to speak in it.
Yeah. Is that better?
Yeah.
All right.
We've started sign-ups, had them per two different times. It's kind of slow, but that's what we expected, so we're going to do, we'll set another date when we do that. We went to the school and left these sign-up sheets, and they can, the student or the athlete can pick one of these up, take it home, get their parents to fill it up, bring it back, and I'll go back down there and get it for them. They make as easy on them as possible. We've been working on the banners that you see around the field when you're out there at a ballgame, and getting several renewals on those. And that is, that is about the most of what we're doing, because we haven't got into the concession part to get it cleaned up or anything like that, and any repairs that might need it at the ball field. There's a question on electricity, but we don't get into that until we find, find out what the problem is. But other than that, that's about all I have. If you have any questions, maybe I can answer it.
It is early in the season.
It is early.
And quite frankly, I'm sure we all appreciate your efforts to get this organized and find those teams and players and put them together. So, thank you for that, Alvin.
You're more than welcome.
When does the season start?
It'll be March, late March, maybe. Mid to late March is court somewhere. But this will give them when to get all signed up earlier. They'll have time to practice together and, you know, just do a lot of things. And then when they, I guess then, I'm not sure, the coaches and everything, and myself and whoever, when it gets down to ball, draw up a schedule and that's, I don't know who they're going to play.
Alvin, do they have girls and boys and their ages?
Not all, probably not all ages. I've got one from a nine or 10-year-old that wants to play fast pitch, fast pitch softball. And there is a fast pitch softball team already together. So, that's why I'm going to turn it in. But now, you know, the man, I don't know how that, how to work out the age of that. And I think it was nine years old, but I'm, yeah, so I kind of find the age limit. I'm kind of being fast pitch, that's a difference.
Alvin, do you know whether those sign-up sheets have gone out? I know Josiah wants to play, and he hadn't brought one home. I just wondered, maybe if they hadn't gone out, maybe that's why.
They should be some at the school. There's, they actually come by here. We've got these that they can.
You got an extra one, I'll take it.
I'll take, I'll give it to you. And actually, I've got some more if y'all need them. I brought some extra just in case.
So, in previous years, we'd done online as well. Do, you don't have an online setup?
I have an online setup.
Okay.
You want these extras here?
No, I just need to sign your sign up.
All right. And then make sure everything, signs are going good. We've had a lot to, six, I say a lot, six, seven, eight. So, that's pretty good, so.
You've had eight sign-ups so far?
Si, there was six, one, two, three, four, five, seven, seven.
That's for the fence banners?
Yes, fence banners. And like the renewals, if they, we're going to use the one they had, they'll pay a hundred dollars. It used to be a hundred and fifty, but it went up, so now it's going to be a hundred and sixty.
For a new one?
Yeah, for a brand-new one. So, we had to go up on the cost of.
Okay.
I think that's all I have.
All right. Thank you very much, Alvin.
I appreciate your effort.
Thank you all. Thanks.
Police Department is next?
Yes, sir.
How you guys doing?
Good.
First of all, I'll say thank you, Mayor Alderman. Did you want to do anything, just go with speech real quick?
Yep.
About what's going on in the town?
Yeah, you give your.
So, what's going on in the town right now? Extra patrol in some specific areas, so don't be alarmed. You know, we're trying to cut, we're trying to cut down on speeders. We're trying to, you know, combat some of the drug issues that we have here, and my guys are doing a great job at doing that. So, if you see more officers out, that's going to be a good thing, okay? We're also still actively patrolling the areas to keep the break-ins down. So, obviously, you're not going to see most of us at night, because hopefully you'll be sleeping. But during the daytime, if you are at home, you're going to see us routinely traveling through your neighborhoods. So, we beef that up. We also are setting up more, what we call saturations, okay? Those will be coming to slow down speeders in certain, in certain areas that have not been addressed before, that will be addressed. And that was due to manpower, but I think we've got everything covered. We're actually able to cover the shifts the way that we need to for right now, okay? Of course, as the city grows, obviously, there's going to be a need for more officers, but we can address that down the line. But there are, I've listened to some concerns, and we are going to be in those particular areas. I'm not going to name those out, but there are areas here in the, we all know where they're at, where people are speeding, speeding. So, we're addressing that as well. As before, we just ask that if you're going to keep in, trying to keep weapons in the vehicle, you know, take those inside at night. We don't want any more unwanted weapons on the street from stolen out of vehicles, okay? Also, just be a little bit more diligent in locking up your sheds, your garages, and things of that nature. It's, it's not like it was when I was growing up, and you could just leave your door unlocked. Unfortunately, I wish it was. Soon, you guys are going to be able to meet all the officers, put a face to who's actually out there protecting you, your families and the visitors here. That's all I have. Okay?
One piece of business before I proceed with the ceremony. William Rayline has been the interim acting police chief due to the resignation of our former police chief, Jared Dunleavy. Therefore, I will entertain a motion to change his status from interim to permanent police chief.
I'll make that motion.
And I'll second.
Nate Wilson moved. Did who second it?
I'll second.
And Doreen seconded? Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next to you, Annamis. Come here, Alvin. Guys, you ready?
We're going to, I'm going to introduce these guys real quick. One down here. So, we've got Chad Locke. He's been here the longest. He's been on nights. He will be coming to day shift. Chad's former military. He serves his community proudly, and he's a great asset to the department and to the community. We've got Donnie Burnett. Come on this way. Donnie Burnett. Former military. Been off and on with the Police Department here what, three, three years? He is, as of now, he's going to be our Assistant Chief of Police. And I think he's going to do a great job. A lot of the citizens know these two very well and respond to these two very well. So, I really do believe that these two alone, it's just going to make the department so much better. Next, we've got Cardron. Cardron, yes, former military as well. He actually has been with us for, how many months now, Cardron? Four months. I got very fortunate, or the department got fortunate, to take him from another department, which we're not going to say. But he come highly recommended. I've worked with him in the past, and he is going to be, he is a great asset and will continue to be a great asset to the department. We've got Cody Smarts. Cody Smarts been here for seven months, eight months? Eight months. He also came from another department. Outstanding officer. I've not had anything but great comments about him, so we're. In the military, or was in military, currently in military, as, so is Donnie Burnett. He's been in law enforcement for a while. Six years he's been with us, for several months. I was able to take him, or borrow him from another department, and which is just making this department even stronger. He is well-liked. He is extremely, as all these guys are extremely courteous, okay? And these are going to be the men protecting you, your families and the visitors. Last but certainly not least, we've got Shannon Elaine, who has been in law enforcement for quite some time. We fortunately got him from another department. He is, he is well-knowledgeable. He was an investigator in other departments. He's got a lot of credentials as well. So, this is the makeup right now. We will be hiring one more to fill, well, it would be my slot, one of the slots. It's an open slot. So, we're going to be interviewing for that individual, making sure that he or she meshes well with the department, but more importantly, fits into the dynamics that we want for the citizens and the visitors of Mont Eagle. So, these are the men that are protecting you guys.
Before I proceed, I can certainly say that you're impressed by their credentials and their training and their ability to take on almost any situation that they come across. So, I think we're very blessed to have people with this kind of background and training that they brought forward to Mont Eagle. So, personally, thank you, gentlemen. And now I understand you're prepared to take the law enforcement oath of honor. So, if you would, aye, repeat your name. Aye. What's your name?
William Rayline.
Aye, Chad Locke. On my honor.
On my honor.
I will never betray my integrity.
I will never betray my integrity.
My character.
My character.
For the public trust.
For the public trust.
I will always have the courage.
I will always have the courage.
To hold myself and others.
To hold myself and others.
Accountable for our actions.
Accountable for our actions.
I will always maintain the highest ethical.
I will always maintain the highest ethical.
Standards and uphold.
Standards and uphold.
The values of my community.
The values of my community.
And the agency I serve.
And the agency I serve.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Chad.
Thanks, y'all.
All right. Anything else?
No.
That's the good stuff of being mayor, let me tell you.
Hey, Rayline, while it's on my brain, Jared and I, we're going to explore some experience-based pay grade models.
Okay.
In anticipation of this next budget year.
That'd be fantastic.
Can you and I plan to get together to talk about it? We're going to be doing the budget probably around April, so we've got plenty of time.
Absolutely.
But just explore, explore what it's about.
Thank you. Fire Department is next? Someone out there for?
Evening.
Good evening.
So far for January, there was thirty-one emergency calls. I've got the breakdown on your report there. I think they had one training. Roughly twenty thousand gallons of water was used from the training class that we just completed to the next line, the sixty-four-hour state class. We've completed that. There was fourteen graduates with their certifications, three recertifieds, and five of them come from Mont Eagle. The cascade system, the breathing air system failed about two weeks ago. That's the machine we use to fill the air cylinders. I called a service tech from Breathing Air, they're the company that services it. A gentleman come out, looked at it, the large bottles, there's four banks on this cascade system. It's the forty-five-hundred PSI compressor with these four banks. Three of the four has heads that's bad on them. They're out of hydrostatic testing. Then the compressor itself has, it's called the ACDs, air control or air content diodes. They're bad. There's two of those in there. This machine's about twenty-four years old, according to their records. It's in pretty rough shape, so they're looking at probably two to four thousand for a, for a repair on it. And I know you guys have just listened and responded with thirty thousand for a new chief's vehicle. I'd like to see what we can do to put that money back into capital, wherever it come from, and put that money towards the cascades our community's got breathing in. So, we can just repair and get by with what I'm driving for now. I think that kind of trumps the, the vehicle. And right now, we're going to Swaner to refill our air bottles, what they've been great partners in helping us. One cascade system, though, that's the bad side of this. One, one system equivalent to what we've got now is about fifty-two thousand dollars. So, it's a very steep hit for the fire department. Maybe we can look for grants or something that's available to replace that. There's a, February ninth's got an AFG grant that's just now closing this, this window, so we'll, we'll entertain that later. But I'd like to at least try to get it fixed for now and buy us some time and, and put that in your minds to move forward. The ISO was called. They'll be within the next few weeks. They're coming to Mont Eagle to do the grading on us for the fire department. Saturday, February the fourth, and Sunday the fifth, they'll be conducting the annual state required EVOC and Vanessa K free classes. The class is taught by TARS. There's about fifty students that signed up for the class from Mont Eagle and neighboring departments, and Pizza Head's offered to cater the meal to us, so.
Travis, does, it's ISO visit. Are we going to have a problem if the cascade system is not fixed when they come do their inspection?
Yes.
So, we need to figure out how to get it repaired before they show up?
I got you. My Breathing Air is supposed to be there tomorrow.
Okay, to do the repair?
Yes.
Great.
Yes. And I just moved forward on the repair. I mean, I was kind of went above y'all and told them it was an emergency repair, and then I was going to talk to the mayor and see if we'd see justification for that, so.
And I have designated that as an emergency repair, because obviously, they need oxygen. Christine?
You guys want to go on to the code side? Is that all right? Code's enforcement side.
As long as I hear you, sure.
Move on down. So, the code's enforcement side, AJ, come in here. AJ Wade's hired on part-time for the, for the code's enforcement side. He's been preparing all the code's paperwork. AJ's learning, working on several different things. He's served five violations within the past month of January. He's working on the Winston Avenue area over around the cemetery, trying to get it straightened up and get compliant with it. He's also working and looking for abandoned vehicles around town. There's several of them. He's got notes on that he's working on resolutions for. Any questions for AJ? He's right here, AJ Wade Phillips. Building inspection side, you want to move on to building inspection? On the building inspection side, I'm, I'm trying to grasp that as best as I can moving forward. I've finally joined in with the ICC and gotten all the manuals and stuff for referencing, able to study for all my exams and everything that's involved in it. There's a lot to, there's a lot to learn with that. But so far, I enjoy it. Speak to Terry Floyd quite a bit. He's the Coffee County Inspector. Terry's kind of proctoring me over the phone and responding to any questions and stuff that I have with anything. He's been very pathetic to me to, to help guide me along. So far, I've done twelve building permits this month. We've addressed twelve of those, whether they be new applicants or existing permits we're attempting to locate. I've done nine refins, final inspections, or SLA inspections throughout the community. On your second page, worked with the Tennessee State Fire Marshal's Office on a commercial hotel with several violations and noncompliance of the International Building Code, the International Property Maintenance Code, and the Fire Code, and we're still currently in connection with the SFMO, the, and the hotel owners are working towards corrective actions for that. And there's several hours been spent referencing building case logs on two separate entities within the town limits, one's a commercial property and one being residential. Corrective actions as well as services expected on both of these items by the end of this week. I met with the mayor today regarding one of the commercial properties in town that's on this report, and I believe I've got enough on the, on the case file to progress forward with that. So, probably tomorrow, that will be the, the whole agenda for it. I also spoke to Mr. Floyd regarding my findings on the case, and he's given me a thumbs up as well, so that's an alternative inspector that's kind of listening in on it. The residential inspection there, so that's still an ongoing case right now, and we're trying to build file and case log on all that. But I suspect that'll be, PD's involved in that as well, so that'll probably be within the next week or so, we'll have some kind of firm reaction on it. Any questions? Anybody's got?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, do we need, what do we need to do as far as this repair on this cascade system?
Yeah, what about it? I didn't hear the question.
What do we need to do? Do we need to approve it? What do we need to do?
The money's on it right now. I mean, he couldn't really give me a definite thing until he got in there and started working on it. He said anywhere from two to four thousand, and they're going to have to take the bottle. That's the big price. The bottle is out of hydrostatic testing. Before they'll, before they'll turn the breaker back on, that's got to be compliant, so that's got to go off-site and be tested.
So, we don't know how much it's going to be?
No, and in answer to your question, I designated it, as I say, an emergency repair. So, when it comes back and we get the information, we'll approve that expenditure due to an emergency basis. That's the best way, good thing to handle it.
I'm more worried about thought on, what, before this happens again, because this thing's giving us trouble all the time. Before this happens again, what can we do as, as a group to come up with a feasible solution? If there's monies out there that we can obtain to put forth to another system, you know, I spoke to a grant writer to try to get us on a docket for, for a grant disco round. We're still in that three-year window with some recording issues, and he, he didn't feel that it would be a, you know, an adequate response from, from the.
Okay.
We talked at, at the workshop about that and, and some other fire department upgrades that we might be able to fold into our end.
Thank you. Next is utility, and this is going to be a comprehensive report, starting probably by our engineer, Travis Wilson.
Just to update everyone where we're at on, we're currently continuing the camera. Just to update everyone where we're at on, we're currently continuing the camera inspection of all the sewer lines here in the town of Mont Eagle. Crews have been working here for the last week or two. It's about a nine-week process to completely camera all the lines, clean the lines. So once we, they complete that, we'll get the results, we'll provide a summary report in a few weeks after the completion of the fieldwork, so.
And that's for the INI issue?
That's part of the INI issue, and that contract is being paid through the ARC grant, so that's a grant that we received last year that's part of the ARP and ARC grants that are paying for the INI reduction process.
Okay, if I may stop you there, as we discussed, there is a proposal for pump station flow monitoring project, which is what Mr. Wilson just outlined. The chair will accept a motion to accept the proposal that we had discussed.
I'll make a motion to do that, yes.
I'll second it.
Okay. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Just for the community.
For the, yes, I was going to say.
Yeah, you gotta put the total in.
Well, besides the total, which is not to exceed, is forty-one thousand, two-hundred-and-twenty-six dollars. That's that part. The other part is, this has been ongoing, this is nothing new to those that have attended meetings and followed the water and sewer issues, so this is something we have to do briefly. INI is when water gets into our sewer plant system that is not sewerage, and obviously that impacts the capacity of the sewer system itself, so this would be a big help in that area, and this is a first step that we've been talking about for a little bit.
That's correct, and approximately thirty thousand of that is for the equipment vendor that will be providing the flow monitoring equipment, which is not a purchase, but it's a rental for thirty days, and that also includes a three-week extension, which may not be needed, so we're highly anticipating that not all of those funds would be utilized. We're hoping to get just a thirty-day study, so there would be a significant savings through equipment rentals that we can subtract from that total, not to exceed a mile.
Okay, is there any discussion on the motion? All those, well, for this roll call vote? If you would.
Doreen?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Nate?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
So I will sign that, the next one, if you would, on the settlement.
Okay. TDEC came for a visit last year, they had some violations at the water treatment plant, one of which is a sedimentation basin that had some previous repairs done. The block walls are, had some disrepair, and so we have been working to, with TDEC, to see what their requirements are. They visited again last week to check up on that, and so we are going to provide a structural assessment of the block walls to make sure that there's no structural integrity loss before we do a, recommend a coating system that would be bid out to a contractor. Once that assessment is completed, we'll come back to you with the results and with recommendations on how to proceed, so this task order would be just on an hourly basis to do some structural assessment, to make sure that before there's any additional coatings on that basin, that it's structurally sound, and that there's not gonna be any structural failures after the coating is placed on.
Thank you, and just to be silly to emphasize the point, these are things that we were told to do that had to be done in our water and sewer system. That also has been discussed for a period of time, and we're getting to resolution, it takes a lot of engineering and research and reports and studies before you come to this point, so thank you for that work. I'll entertain a motion to accept the proposal as we discussed for the sedimentation basin assessment.
I'll make a motion, we go forward with that.
Sergeant moved, is there a second to the motion?
I'll say.
Who?
Doreen.
Doreen seconded. Roll call vote please again.
Doreen?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Nate?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Is there anything else for reports?
Not unless you have any questions for me on any.
Are there any questions of our engineer for water and sewer?
Thanks very much.
What's the status of the water tower?
John, do you have anything?
No, he's pretty well covered.
The, Nate was asking about the water tank, so we are planning to advertise for that this week, to let an advertisement out, so we will have bids, a bid opening scheduled, I'll let you know when, might be a good day to have that, it'll be here at Town Hall. Within the next thirty days, we'll open bids, check references, and then at the next board meeting, if we can make all that happen prior to the next board meeting, that we would come back with a recommendation to award for the contractor and bring the bids to you, so we provide a certified bid tab. That work again is, would be scheduled to be completed in the summertime, when the weather is permitting, so we're on schedule of that, and that's another listed item on TDEC's report that had to be addressed, and so we're addressing the city tank behind the fire hall, is the one that we're talking about. Thanks.
Okay, any other questions?
No.
Thank you very much, and John, you didn't have anything?
No, I don't, luckily, yes.
That's correct, okay. Anything from the street? Nothing at all?
No, I'm glad you got that.
No, other than the work that you're doing for both of you, John and Keith, is more than admirable, and thank you for that. You can stay or whatever suits your schedule, so. Let's move on, we have done building inspector code enforcement, planning commission, Dan, do you have anything on that?
We're just moving on with the various plans that are coming in for us each month. We've got a planning commission on the seventh, and we'll be looking at some new development that's been proposed, and address that then.
Thank you. There is activity, obviously, in town, and people are looking at things, and some people have said, "I saw a truck over there and over here," and they look like they're surveying. When it comes to the planning commission is when it really becomes official. Many developers do what they call the due diligence, so they may be looking and checking and measuring and all of that, but when it's appropriate and comes to the planning commission, that's when our clock will start, so I just wanted you to know that. I think that's about it for the planning commission. Okay, let's, Alderman report, let's just go down. Doreen, you have anything?
No, not right now.
Jessica?
No, I don't.
Dan?
No.
Nate?
Yeah, you had asked me to give an update on the streetlights. I've been going around through town, I'm not all the way through town, but I'm roughly working from the smokehouse side over toward this side of town, and I think we've turned in another eight or ten broken streetlights and removed another half dozen that were redundant. There are many more that are out. If you guys have, or if anybody has one that's out, just let City Hall know or shoot me an email, and we'll try to get it figured out. We're looking at maybe doing something a little bit more comprehensive in the downtown and in the commercial areas to try to figure out how to update and upgrade and hopefully lower our bills at the same time, but that's probably something that's gonna happen with Sequachi Valley and be a little slower, so I'm hoping I can get through all the residential areas in the next three or four weeks.
Okay, thank you. I have deputized Nate from time to time to be our lighting expert, our audiovisual expert, our battery changer for microphone expert, so with all that he has done for the town, thank you, and I know it's a lot, and I have a few more projects in mind for him, so we'll keep him busy, but thank you, Nate. Okay, well, since we did all those reports, is there any questions from any of the citizens? This is the equivalent of a seventh inning stretch, I guess, go ahead.
What was the cost of the assessment of the basin?
Not to exceed on, I think the total was seventy-five hundred?
I think it was seventy-five hundred.
Okay.
Right there. It's just to bring in a structural engineer to have more educated eyes to look at it.
And just so you know, these are, you know, everything sounds great, but once you get in there to look, there might be an extra, or there might be a reduction, so either way, it's hard to get accurate estimates in advance of them doing the work. So, nothing else? And let's move on to, well, bring it over here where I can see it. The second reading of ordinance twenty-one dash twenty-two, which is the budget amendment you all have.
Yeah, I don't have that online, sorry about this, folks. I did the first time we read it.
And what it is, is to correct, not correct, is to supplement the salaries so that H.A. Wade, as an ordinance officer, can be picked up on payroll and a few other budget items that we had discussed, so this is really our second reading. Is there any discussion on the second reading?
I don't have any.
I'd entertain a motion to accept it, as submitted.
I'd like a motion to approve ordinance dash, or twenty-one dash twenty-two.
And, I'm sorry, who was that?
Nate.
Doreen.
Doreen made, is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Okay, since it's a budget item, roll call vote again.
Doreen?
Yes.
Jessica? Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Nate?
Yes.
Greg?
Okay, that concludes old business. Alderman, is there any other business under old business? Okay, Mr. Lay.
Yes, I was here last month, and you said you guys would have an answer this month on business permits.
Business permits, we're getting to under new business.
But mine was old, I didn't know.
And what parcel was that, I'm sorry?
It was under new, that's fine.
This was the propane, right?
Yeah, the warehouse.
Well, let's.
I don't care, I mean, I just thought, felt that it was here last month, it would be old.
Well, you're right, we might as well, since it's old business, we might as well talk about it under old business. Thank you for that, Mr. Lay.
And the answer is?
The answer is, due to difficulties that we've had in negotiating this and getting it cleared up through southeast Tennessee development, we're not prepared to do that. I have endorsed the proposal of setting, creating an industrial area on the other side of exit one-thirty-five, on some vacant land that I believe you're involved with, but right now, unfortunately, the mayor and Alderman do not have a business permit for that operation. For any, well, whatever businesses you were going to put in, there was talk of a warehouse and talk of propane and self-storage units, et cetera, so.
Right.
Was there a specific business permit?
Yes, there was two applications submitted.
Okay.
And I guess you can deal with that under the, under the new business.
I don't know how to.
First question is the zoning uses and interpretation of the uses, C-three versus the light industrial, and then Travis called me today and asked about using that location for the fire training thing, the fourth and fifth, and I thought he was sure they'd used it previously when they have a large gathering, and then.
Yes.
I got thinking, it might not be zoned correctly.
Well, no, it's probably not, this is emergency vehicle, of course, that's required, and previous owners, and I'm sure you would too, allow us to use the land, because that's all we do, we don't.
Well, I wouldn't want to be in violation, of course.
Oh, I'm sorry?
I would not want to be in violation.
No, and I would not want you to be in violation. So thank you for your cooperation, and yes, they will use it, but I really think in a serious note here, Dean Lay has come to us more than once about creating an industrial zone. I don't see why we can't do that, there are restrictions that we can put on those entities that we don't want, and I'm not sure it's in the town's best interest to keep delaying this kind of zoning change, because absent that, I guess you can put it anywhere that's C-three or industrial, and that's why I think I'd rather have an industrial zone and eliminate the C-three zoning. If that's possible or something to be considered, I'd entertain a motion to move forward with that, and refer to the planning commission as well.
Well, of course, it all originally started with the storage units.
Yes.
And the issue is, in my C-two, I'm legal, in the C-three, I'm noncompliant, and of course, I've had them deliver some units to the C-three, and I've got more units scheduled, and I've got a contract to sign on some fencing, and I need to know, I've got to, I mean, am I gonna, am I gonna do all this in the C-two or the C-three?
Well, as I've.
Which is non, not allowed, yeah.
As I've said more than once, I don't see why we can't move forward with some kind of zoning creation of an industrial area, as I say, across from exit one-thirty-five.
Well, we have, we have two business building permits already on our file that you have.
Business license?
License that you have supplied.
Yeah, I got a building permit also for some renovation.
And a permit for, for the work to be done on the property you've purchased to do that, so. Yes, I mean, I'll make the motion and would entertain a motion to change the zoning over to industrial, commercial, and to make a way for the various other entities to be brought to town in that area, in that area that is in question, so I'm gonna make a motion to change it to industrial, commercial.
Is there a second to that motion?
I think Anya told us we could not, that it had to be a recommendation from the planning commission, that's what she told us.
They recommended it.
But once we turned it down, they have to recommend it again.
Well, Anya didn't run this.
Didn't say we couldn't.
There's a vote on the floor, and then.
She was saying that that's how she understood the code.
Well, you and Anya don't get to decide that there's not gonna be a vote now, there's been a motion made in a second.
Yeah, that's right, wait a minute. Everyone, hold on, there's a motion on the floor, I called for a second, is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Doreen second. Okay, now there's discussion on the motion. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Are we voting for a storage unit complex or a gas building or both?
I was asking for everything, anything in the industrial with the exception of adult entertainment, and several months ago, I think it was the previous council, I said, "Take that out, I'm not concerned about that," and that was something you guys were gonna look at and do.
That's right, and we do.
And then I have, due to not having clarification, I've got three or four things looking at doing out there, but I don't know if I'm gonna be legal in doing them, one of them being the storage units, and I'm gonna use the mobile storage units, the shipping containers instead of stick building with a slab and a structure, and I'm gonna sell those also to people that might want one. I've got, I've got a company now that's wanting to rent a portion of my building there that would take those in and retrofit them to where they would be, they could be, homeowner could get one, and they put a roll-up door on it, a twenty footer, they would modify for living space, which would not fit in the town of Mont Eagle due to the size of it, so, but that's a big thing. If you look in Nashville, there's university down there, have got those for dorm housing on a temporary basis, but anyway, they're wanting to bring them in the building, modify, put in windows, doors, or garage doors, and then bring them back out on the lot, and then they would, the buyer would pick them up, have them picked up there and delivered to them, and then I'm just gonna rent the spot for the propane tank, I'm not opening up a propane business, but I can't sign a contract if the city's gonna reject it or cause issues, and that, there was some, a lot of discussion, I think, about the little propane bottles that you see everywhere in town, but this is not the same thing. I'm talking about a huge, I don't know what the capacity is, but it would be similar to the Sequachi Valley propane tank up on Tracy City Highway there.
Distribution center.
Yes, yes, and now, the guy told me those had to be fenced, and I said, "Well, you can put the fence up, because there's not one up here," and so.
Got a white fence in front of it.
On the other side of the road. Anyway, that's not an issue, he said, if I work a deal with them on land lease. He said if, if I work a deal with them on land lease, that he would comply. And he acted like that was a state, or a safety issue thing about, about a fence, security.
And for his own security, too, I would imagine.
But anyway, and he would, he would store the, the 500 gallon tanks, 250 gallon tanks and stuff, just like Squatchy Valley does.
Okay.
And, but anyway, that's, I'm saying, that's still ongoing, and, but I'm kinda in limbo. These things that I'm not doing myself, I'm reluctant to sign a lease with them when, then it comes back to you guys and you say, "Oh, no, you misunderstood." And, and like I said, that, that's kinda where I'm at, until you guys clarify what can be done.
So, if Anya has a problem with this and says that it needs to go to the planning commission, the planning commission is not going to say yes or no, they're gonna make a recommendation that's gonna come right back to us.
Right, exactly.
So why can't we bypass that step?
She said, because of the way the charter is set up and the way planning and zoning operates, we have to act on recommendations from planning and zoning. And so that's the reason I asked for clarification, 'cause, you know, you had asked for storage buildings to be allowed in C3 as well, and they received that draft ordinance, but they never acted on it, so we can't act on it.
Yeah, and I'm not asking you to.
Right.
But, but again, I would emphasize, the biggest public relations problem the town of Montegoal has is with Anya and the planning and, and her direction of telling the planning commission what to do and now telling the city council what to do. And I would argue that that's not, that's not in her job description. And, and someone needs to tell her or her boss or Southeast Tennessee Development, but there need, if there's any clarification to be made, it needs to be made with Southeast Tennessee Development District on who, who runs the town of Montegoal.
And they've had...
And that can be addressed in lieu of the fact that the last two-hour workshop we just had with, with Anya, that, that we learned that, yes, she is just referring to giving us guidance and giving us directions as to what can and can't be done or should or shouldn't be done.
Right.
But that, no, she does not have a decisive part in it, and that's why this motion's just been made, and we've received a second on it, and it's on the floor being discussed.
And I appreciate that.
So is there any other further discussion on this motion?
One of the things that concerns me is that the recent problems that we've gotten into have had to do with the fact that we don't have some sort of a long-range plan, and we're now trying to get together and have a long-range plan. And if we, if we change zoning for you before we have our plan in effect, then all kinds of businesses could be set there that don't go with our long-range plan.
But that's not our fault. I'm 65 years old. I can't wait on your long-range plan. The planning commission has been here for 40 years. You've had 40 years to get a plan.
Well, I haven't had 40 years to get a plan.
No, but, but the town of Montegoal has. The town was incorporated in 1962, so, so it's what, 60, gonna be 61 years old this year? You've had a planning commission for 40 years. The town, there's several of us in here that's older than the town of Montegoal. By a show of hands. But, you know, you keep, we gotta have a plan, we gotta have a plan. You've had 40 years.
Well, putting that, excuse me, putting that aside, to wait for a plan is asking all businesses, in essence, that want to come to Montegoal to wait? And how long is the wait? So, I understand the need of a plan. I think we should work on a plan. I think first steps have been taken on a plan, but I'm not sure it's fair to hold up any businessman, with all due respect. Forget Dean Lay. If somebody else comes to us with a situation and we don't have a plan yet, I'm not sure it's fair to put anyone on hold. If the request is reasonable, if the land is there, if it's in an area that we say other businesses should've gone there anyway, then I don't see that we're drastically affecting any future plan. I'm not sure we'd put apartments over there. I'm not sure we'd do anything over there other than develop it. I mean, there'd be a lot of other properties to clear up before it's a general plan.
Well, there's not a lot of, of interest in coming to that end of town anyway, okay? And, and the kind of development you would prefer, and I, I would prefer, but, but it's not, I mean, drive out there and look around. It's not, you know, see, see what you've got out there, and then it, it's kinda unreasonable, I think, for you to expect that that's gonna be the Blooming Garden of the town of Montegoal. And I'm not complaining about any of my neighbors or anything. When I bought that property, I knew what was out there. It, it's, it may or may not be in violation of, of any, something, I don't know. I'm not, that's not why I'm here. I don't care if it stays, the other people's property stays like it is. I'm not, you know, I, I'm, that's not why I'm here. I'm just trying to be able to utilize property that I have bought and paid for, and then the town of Montegoal says, "Well, we're gonna work on a long-range plan."
I understand.
So, Dean, I'm, I'm sorry that you're experiencing these delays. However, you know, the way I think things are intended to operate is that a business owner and a property owner like yourself would go to the planning commission, inform the planning commission of what they, what intentions they have to develop the property. The planning commission then weighs that against other competing objectives. Hopefully, at some point, there's a plan. We don't have a plan yet. I'm not saying we need to wait for a plan. They make a recommendation, it comes to us. What happened was, you went to the planning commission and you asked for a zoning change without any sort of idea of what would, would go there. They recommended that to us. We turned it down based on that information. You came afterwards to us with a building permit without going back to the planning commission to ask them. And that, I think, is why our policies state that zoning changes originate at the planning commission. They're the body tasked with that.
I understand that.
And so, I'm not saying anything other than, is a matter of process. What we were told, and I have no reason to believe it is incorrect, is that when it was turned down by this body, that you can simply go and ask the planning commission, which is charged with making zoning recommendations to the council.
They did that.
They did that. We answered it, and what we are being told is that it has to happen again.
By your planner.
And again, in, in a normal circumstance, the planning commission has some details with which to work from, and in that last one, they did not.
That's not true. The planning commission has nothing to do with, with what I'm proposing to do. I do not have to do a site plan. I did a minor subdivision on the property that the planning commission approved. The, the only issue is, is the use legal for the zone? That's the only issue.
You don't have to...
And I do not have to tell you what I'm gonna put on a piece of property if it fits within that zone. And, and Anya, she, that was the big to-do, and that's, and you've brought it up again, is she said, "You must declare what you're gonna use that property for." I said, "It will be a use within that zone." Because I don't really know for sure, just like the propane thing. You know, that may or may not come about, but I can't sign a lease on the propane rental, on the ground rental, land lease, and then you guys say, "No, you can't do that."
But, if you do not declare your intent, then it is by definition spot zoning.
No, it's not.
Because we have no, the planning commission has no way to evaluate...
If it fits in those uses, it is not spot zoning.
If we are asking for a rezone, if you're asking for a rezone without submitting to the planning commission to the intent and without a general plan being adopted by the town, that is by definition...
That's just another way for you and the planning commission or whomever to delay. You, you pass things up here when you want to, when it's questionable, you can delay them. It, it's just, the reason the town of Montegoal has the reputation it has to developers is because of this stuff that you're talking about. And, and it seems like you, you and Anya are the author of all of it.
I'm sorry you feel that way.
Well, and I'm not the only one that feels that way.
Be that as it may, I think we have the drift. I will offer an opinion. I understand Nate's point. I also understand Dean's point, and I'm not quite sure that that's how I understood the timing of the planning commission's actions from the very beginning, when we talked about how those storage containers were in an authorized zone. I'm satisfied with Dean's answer that whatever that zone calls for is what he's limited to do, whatever he chooses to do. So, without further ado, I think, and I know we need a motion, but if there's no other discussion, the chair is prepared to take a vote. Is there any other discussion from any of the Aldermen?
Well, I think we have to remember that one of the things that we did at the end of last year was approve the area that's across the street and down the road from you as an RV park, a resort park.
Before you get to me.
Right. That's gotta be developed.
Yeah.
Where, and I don't know how, if, if we're, if we're putting resorts on that side of the street, if they want industrial complexes right across the street.
Well, I don't think this is an industrial complex. I told you what the potential use is.
Your potential use, but it could be...
Well, I've got 85 acres right beside your, what did you call it, that development?
Resort.
Yeah, the resort. I've got 85 acres right adjoining that resort, and, and I can use multiple uses for that, so, I, I mean, I'm on down the road and go out there, have you been out there and looked what's across the road from me?
I don't like what's across the road from you. If industrial is, it's legal to go all across the street. It could be car, old car lots, wrecked cars.
What's across the road from me? I've got six acres is what we're talking about. There's about two acres across the road from me. You talk about car lots or junk cars or wrecked trucks, and, and I'm not complaining about them. I don't care. And now, all of a sudden, you're worried about the resort?
Yes.
Well, they're gonna see that. They're not even gonna see what I'm doing. I'm not visible when they go in on Wells Road.
Are there any other comments from the Aldermen?
No, I'm off, I'm off about doing it because he's not, he's not offering a site plan, he's not planning on going out there and building anything right now, he's just asking for a rezon.
He said he didn't need a site plan to do it.
I don't.
I don't know why that would have to go before the planning commission in order for them to recommend it back to us. I don't understand. I think we could go ahead and do it.
So, we're gonna, we're gonna vote on making one, one little area industrial out of the whole area.
Just like your other one was, that you changed from industrial to R3. Yes.
So we're talking about, to be clear, your six-acre parcel that we've not discussed, where six plus or minus acres?
But before, the only industrial zone was the Shock Creek property, and it was changed from light industrial to R3, I think. Now you don't, do not have any light industrial zone, and there's, so you don't need it, and, and, but the uses that are in that light industrial, you, you are gonna have to put them somewhere else. You can't, just like the warehouse or, or whatever, you can't just say, "We're not gonna have those in the town of Montegoal because we don't like who's putting them in."
I don't, it's not that I don't like you...
Well, if you love me. You can't, you can't tell me, "I can't do it 'cause you love me."
Lucy, yeah.
So, the difference between the property that was industrial that went to R3 is it was adjacent to other residential. So this is not adjacent to other industrial. There is no other industrial. So that is the concern about voting on a zoning change that didn't derive from the planning commission.
It did derive from planning commission. The planning commission recommended that it be changed.
So that is the definition of spot zoning?
No, it's not. Why would they make that recommendation? That was discussed in the definition of spot zoning. That was discussed several months ago. And, and how many acres do you have to have for it not to be a spot zone? I think the main thing in spot zone is it can't be adversarial to, to the adjoining property owners. It, it is the main thing on, on the, on the spot zone. It, it's not because it's one track of land.
Generally, when it's one track of land surrounded by different land uses, that's when it comes into a question.
Generally, yeah, generally. But it's not mandatory. It's, you know, we can stand here and argue about it all night long, and it's not gonna change anything, and, and, and I'm trying to get away from the, the container being down here on this other corridor, but for some reason, you guys are forcing me to put them down there.
Which is my great concern. I don't like them there.
The ordinance was drafted within the planning commission to deal with that, and if my, if I don't, if I, memory serves me correctly, you asked them not to worry about it?
Yes. That was, they were gonna draft out here, and I said, "Don't worry about it, I'll just keep them down here where they're legal."
But now you're saying that you need to move them again, so we can act on that.
No, I don't have to move them. Here's what I can do. I can rent them down here, which is what I'll do, and I can still, if I rent my building out here for them to rehab them, they can rehab them out there. I can leave them out there on the lot and just not rent them, and just rent them all down here, and, and then I'll just have two lots, you know, and, and I'll be in compliance with what you're wanting to do. And, and it doesn't make any sense to me, but...
But, but I, I hear you saying that this has taken way too long, but then you also said that you told the planning commission to not act on the solution, that they came up for you three months ago. Is that correct? Did I just hear you correctly?
What I said, when they were gonna change out here to allow storage units in a C3, which there was opposition by some on the council and on the planning commission for that, I said, "Don't worry about it, I'll just keep them down here in the C2." And I can still do that, and, and, and out here, I can have them sitting there as long as I don't rent them. And down here, I can stack them up two or three high, but I can rehab them out here, and, and, you know, if that's the direction you guys wanna go. But, but the main issue right now is the, is the, is my land lease on the propane thing. And, and the easiest way for me to find out whether I can do that or not is if I get a business license to do that, then, in my opinion, you have approved, the council has approved that. And, and warehouse, you know, and when I say warehouse, I'm talking about, you know, warehouse, what is the definition of warehouse?
Dean, this is a lease where they're gonna give you money, right?
Yes.
So, what do you care if they're allowed to put it there? If they're gonna sign a lease with you and give you money? Isn't that their job to come petition for it?
No, no, I can't, I've got to give them, I've got to give them a piece of property that's legal for them to have that. And right now, it's not.
Really?
Yes.
Every other developer would come here, so if somebody wanted to open that business, they would come and ask for that.
After they do a lease with me.
Right.
Right. But they're not gonna come up here and...
Go through this.
Right. I mean, I'm out here trying to recruit something that, that you don't like.
No.
Right. And you have the right to feel that way.
I use propane, I'm happy, I'm happy to do it. I'm just, I just wanna point out that we had a solution for your storage unit...
No, you didn't.
Three months ago, and you asked the planning commission not to vote on it.
The, the solution was for the council to approve the zoning change, and, and that was voted down. That was the solution.
Okay, well, the situation is, we've got a, we've got a motion on the floor and a second, and we've drug just about all the hair off this horse, so...
I apologize.
No, you're fine, you're fine, and Nate's fine. You both got an opinion, and I appreciate it, but the chair is gonna move on with it.
Well, do you make a motion to call the question?
Sure. I'll make a motion to call the question.
Nation has made a motion to call the question. Is there a second to call the question? That would end the debate.
That would end the debate?
Yeah.
I'll say.
Okay. We're voting on that motion only to call the question. Roll call vote.
Doreen.
Yes.
Jessica.
No, and I want to say that I don't have any objection to your business, but by making an area that's...
You're not voting on that.
We're not voting on that. We're just, we're just stopping about it.
Yes or no vote?
But this affects my decision.
Well, that's all right for now.
No, you can vote no next time.
Uh, Dan?
Yes.
Nate?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. Okay, so we're calling the question. Now we're ready to take a vote on the main motion that was made by Dan Sargent. Okay. Roll call vote again on the motion.
Doreen.
Yes.
Jessica.
No.
Dan.
Yes.
Nate.
No.
Brett?
Yes.
Yes.
Mike? Okay.
Is there any more discussion?
No, not now. We'll, we'll get to that. Okay, so we did the budget amendment. We took care of old business there. First reading of ordinance 1-23, which is the zoning change on Catherine Avenue.
No, I don't have that either.
Yes, that's in the packet with the man.
This is the second reading?
Second reading.
I make a motion to approve ordinance number over 1-23.
I have it on the agenda. It's the first reading. Unless I'm doing something wrong.
Is it first?
On the agenda, I have first reading.
Oh, I thought it's.
1-23, zoning change on Catherine Avenue.
I don't think that's correct, is it?
No.
That's not correct.
We had a first reading?
We have first reading already.
Okay.
Yeah.
Make a note to check that. I'll be guided by that. If there's a change, we'll have to revisit it. So I will entertain a motion of the, a second reading of ordinance 1-23, which concerns zoning changes on Catherine Avenue.
I make the motion.
Who's that?
Second.
Doreen and Dan seconded. Is there any discussion on that motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. First reading of ordinance 2-23, water rate changes. You all have that.
I do have that up here.
That's the first reading. Okay. I'll entertain a motion to accept on first reading.
Okay. I don't have that, but in the workshop, you said the only difference was we went from 16,000 commercial to 5,000 commercial.
Yes.
So I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second to that motion?
I second that.
Doreen and Jessica. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries on the first reading. Business permits. Do we have your tenants here?
Yes.
Come on up and refresh my memory.
I'm Michelle Story, my name is practitioner, and I filed an application to, for a business permit to open a medical spa near Mont Eagle.
And the name of the spa is?
It's gonna be called Fade at Mont Eagle.
Okay. You all have that. They appear, they did not appear last time. They're doing us a favor, sitting through this and appearing this time. So is there any questions you have on this or can we approve the business permit?
No.
Welcome to town.
I'll accept a motion to accept the business permit.
I'll make such a motion.
And I'll get the exact license here. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
And roll, uh, well, we don't need a roll call vote. I think we're pretty well down the road. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Nate?
I did.
And that was for Fade 2 LLC.
Fade 2 LLC, CBA, Fade at Mont Eagle.
Right, that's, thank you.
All right, thank you.
And the other tenant is? Hi, thank you both for coming, by the way. I appreciate the extra effort. Please.
My name is Sarah Saltridge. I plan to open up a massage therapy business at the country mart. I'm asking for a business permit.
Okay, are there any questions on this application for business permit?
No.
I'll accept a motion to approve it.
Make a motion to approve it.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
Any discussion on the motion? Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome to Mont Eagle.
All right, so we did business per, is there anything else that we have anywhere? Okay. Any citizen comments? Yes, sir.
I have put a, a request in for a business permit. I know Mr. Floyd right here in town. And on January the 3rd or the 4th, I signed a request for a business license here in town.
I remember that.
Okay.
And I'm sorry that Debbie is not here today. There's, as I have said earlier, family emergency that the packets may not be complete. Does anyone have anything for Mr. Floyd on the business permit?
Can you tell us what your business is?
Just go ahead and discuss it and perhaps you can resolve that tonight.
Okay, thank you, sir. I have been in Murfreesboro, Tennessee since 1995. I've had the most successful used car business in Murfreesboro. We consistently win the best place in the road county to buy a car. I got tired and burned out, so I retired. I came to Mont Eagle, fell in love with this place. I've been here five years. And I retired two years ago. And that retirement didn't sit well with me. Back surgery, five visits to the emergency room, and then three more surgeries. And I told the doctor, I said, I'm going back to work. So I owned the place next door to Summerfield Market for about five years. I worked my, worked on it and improved it and cleaned the place up. And it just hit me one day. I could turn this into a place for me to work and a money-making situation for the city of Mont Eagle. I enjoy up here. Hope, pray, die up here.
Well, we're glad to have you. But let me just ask, so you would be selling cars or what's the?
Be selling, a late model. I don't like junk cars. I don't like.
You don't do that?
No, I don't. It'd be late model, nice cars and trucks. No salvage titles and I'm not gonna go up there. You won't see junky cars sitting around everywhere. There'll be five to 10 vehicles and they'll be nice.
Thank you. Any questions from the aldermen?
So typically, we have, we approve business licenses as soon as the life, so, life safety inspection has been done by the building inspector. Do you, you know, have you had the building inspector up?
I'm up to Mr. Floyd's inspector. He's here for his check and audit fee on it. Everything good on that side?
Bueno. Okay. That was the only question I had.
Any other questions from the aldermen?
It's, when you get to Summerfield Market, it's like a.
It's on the left on the Tracy Highway.
Yeah. Just right on the side of that.
And you have done some site work. That much I do know. You fixed it up and cleaned it up. So thank you for that. Any other questions or comments?
Is there any reason we can't approve it tonight?
No.
No.
Then I make a motion to approve it.
I'll second it.
Doreen and Nate for A1 Auto Sales.
A1 Auto Sales, Trading Station.
And Trading Station.
Yes.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. No further questions or discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, as they used to say, last call. Any comments or questions from the audience? Yes, ma'am.
Water change from 16,000 to 5,000 commercial water tap inside the city limits?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
So the, these have gone up. So in the current ordinance, we don't have a policy for commercial taps. We needed to get one. In the last administration, Marilyn drafted a set. And that one, she had come up with 16,000. We are supposed to cover our costs. This is not intended to be profit sharing. And so the current mayor can talk about why he changed it. He did the due diligence and, and arrived at that much lower number.
Thank you. That's exactly right. It's, it's not a profit center, as it can sometimes be referred to. It's a fair reimbursement of our costs plus a small amount for administration. And that's a number that we came up with in all fairness, that does cover our costs worth a little bit. But to charge people 16,000, it would be hard to justify that. Maybe other municipalities do that. Other municipalities have a separate public utility board, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. But in Mont Eagle, we wanna be fair and we wanna cooperate with developers as they come forward if we can. And that $5,000 number for inside the city limits seemed fair.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the question. Anything else? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Jackie Murbles. And I wanted to say that I really appreciate the, the pathway that was created with the last administration around the park with the gravel and all that type of thing. And I would like to tell you, it is collapsing. There is a, there's kind of a swamp there at, at the corner of Jim Long and Overton. And there's, it is a swamp. And there's trees and everything. And there's a, a lake. And I was out there tonight walking my dog, and my left leg went right down. It is collapsing into the water. And I just wanted to bring that up to the council so we maybe get it fixed.
Thank you, we'll do that. What's the location again? Jim Long and what?
Overton.
Thank you.
It's on the pathway, not on the road, right? It's on the pathway, yes, ma'am. And it just kinda just goes right down into the, the lake.
We'll certainly look into that. As we all know, there's been a pretty good amount of rainfall, which is good for our lake, but not good for some of the land around us. So thank you for bringing that to our attention. And I'll go over that with our road department, Keith Butler. Thank you.
Mary, it just occurred to me that, if you can make a note, when I was out looking at streetlights that are out, a lot of our, our walking lights downtown are also out.
So you're.
I'll have a look at that as well. You know, this is exactly the kind of cooperation we need. I, I hate to tell you, but I can't cover every square inch of Mont Eagle every day. So if you see something, then say something. You know, the old phrase that Amtrak used to use, probably still does. So if you see something wrong, it's no problem at all. Just call City Hall. Say, you know, this light is out or that is turning into a swamp or there's a big pothole or something. And we'll take a look at it and try to fix it as soon as possible. Yes, sir?
And just a couple of things real quick. So what will the record reflect that we voted on for Mr. Leyton?
It'll reflect, as far as I'm concerned.
First reading, second reading, and what did we vote on?
No, we voted on creating an industrial area on the six plus or minus acres that he owns on the other side, whichever direction that is, of exit 135.
You say create. Are we rezoning it?
Yes, probably. I don't know the current zoning. That's C3, isn't it? It's C3 now.
That's what I'm asking. What did you actually vote on? Did I consider changing it or did you change it?
We changed it.
Okay, so it's not a consideration. You changed the zone.
No, that's right.